Call this Altoona City Council Work Session to order from Monday, February 28th. We'll now have a moment of silent prayer. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, since there's no public, we'll move on to our first discussion item, which is a scooter presentation. And joining us, we have Jeremy Lynch from Bird. I've recently been in conversation with Bird over scooters and the pending scooter legislation. And Jeremy was gracious enough to come out to our meeting tonight to kind of give council a briefing on scooter sharing programs. So Jeremy, floor is yours.
Great, thank you. As the mayor said, yeah, the Commonwealth is, the Transportation Committee does have Senate Bill 892 in front of them currently. And they look to, we look to get a vote sometime this month to allow scooter sharing in third-class cities. Currently, the Commonwealth only allows it in second-class cities, which would be only Pittsburgh. So they're looking to, we're looking to expand that with others into third-class cities. And so that's kind of why we're here, is just to get some, see if there'd be any interest and support from Altoona. So Bird is a micro-mobility company focused on shared electric scooters. We were founded in 2017. We basically pioneered the space in Santa Monica, California. Currently, we're in five continents in 25 countries, and that's well over 350 cities now. And Bird actually went public just a few months ago. So it's become very successful for us. We've changed a lot since 2017, vehicle-wise and product-wise and IT-wise, which has been all to the positive. How it works, it is app-based, so it is available on the Apple Play or Google Player or the App Store. You simply download the app, you create a profile, you complete the safety tutorials, you agree to the local rules, which are specific to the community in which we operate. And from that, you have to actually, and then your driver's license and a credit card or debit card in order for payment. When you are approved, what you then do is there's a QR code on top of the handlebars of every scooter. You simply scan into the scooter whenever you're ready to ride. You get charged a dollar to get on and a per-minute fee. And once you get on, you basically ride to your destination, you scan out of the scooter on the QR code, park it in a destination that is where the parking is legal and where we ask you to park it. You have to stand back and take a picture of the scooter, so we know where you parked it. And that picture is uploaded to the cloud and to your account, so we can tell where you did park it in case it ever becomes something of the future, that you may have parked it illegally. And then you're finished with your ride. Most of our rides average anywhere between eight to 12 minutes and cost anywhere between $6 and $8, depending on the length of the ride. So it is dockless. They follow the rules of the road, just like any bike would. What that does is gives our members the ability to take it where they would like to go, whether that's back to their house for lunch, or someone from the Altoona campus wanting to go off-campus to get something to eat, or to stop in someplace, to go stop and then take it back to campus. Think of the hospital, someone coming out for lunch, wants to go that extra half-mile, spend a little more money to stop at a place where they normally wouldn't have gone for lunch, those kind of things. Just gives them that extra space. And plus, if you do take it home, there's really not a dock-to-docket if you're just going back to have something, lunch at your house, and then you can bring it back to work. It is available for use in the designated operating zone, so we can, and this will be a product feature, I'll show you in a second. There is an operating zone that we can create around Altoona, so if a scooter rides out of that operating zone, it comes to a stop. So you can basically create a zone that's much smaller than the community itself, in which you know scooters would be used, and keep areas where you know scooters necessarily wouldn't be ridden, out of the operating zone. So it is customizable in that way. And the vehicle just waits for the next rider to pick it up, or moved by Bird, and I'll explain a little more as that comes up as well. So this is the Bird 3, this is our latest model. It's actually quite an engineering marvel, considering where we started. It weighs about, I'd say it weighs about 55 pounds. It is very heavy-duty. It averages about 35 miles to the charge. Some of the great features on it, it does have enhanced lighting, so there are two lights that flash well over 500 feet. There is a brake light and side lighting on it. It's easily seeable at night, and those lights run full through the day. One of the great things, it does have anti-theft encryption, so there are sensors on it in case it is moved, or in any fashion, if it's not in reservation. Our fleet manager is alerted to the fact that it is in movement when it's not in reservation. So it is, and because it is GPSed, it is impossible to really steal, because we'll know where it is at all times. Couple of really cool features, the tires, they're puncture-proof. So even if a nail went into one, there's a gel that gets seeped out into the hole that fills the tire, that doesn't allow it to go flat. So those tires are very new, they're fantastic for us. Couple, one of the other couple of cool features is, as far as the brakes go, there is a sensor on the brakes as well, that if the two brakes seem to fail and not work, that the scooter will come to a stop. So the brain knows when those, there's a sensor in those brakes that if they do fail, that the scooter will come to a stop and the rider can safely get off the vehicle. There's also skid detection. So if someone is going too fast, and they come to a stop, a skidding stop, it lets us know, that alerts the fleet manager and the account manager that that person riding the particular scooter was going too fast at a certain moment where they came to a skidding stop. It helps us police our members and keep those folks in line that may necessarily not actually be using it to its intent. It's a dual kickstand, so it doesn't get tipped over very easily. You'd have to actually make a concerted effort to knock it over. It goes 15 miles an hour, that is the top speed. And one of the other great features, in particular areas of high traffic, you can actually slow the scooter down. So if you can ride into a particular zone where the scooter may drop to 12 or 10 miles an hour, it just allows for a little more awareness for the rider to know that they're in an area of heavily trafficked, areas where high restaurant use, a lot of stops on the street, things like that, that does slow them down, so they become more aware of their surroundings. Just a couple, one of those other great features. So one of the great economic benefits of micro-mobility, again, supporting the local businesses. Over 50% of our riders report using Bird to visit a local business. And again, it's that first-mile-last-mile transportation option that allows riders to go that extra distance to get something else they may not have gone to before, as far as spending money in a local business. We find that to be very, very popular in local communities. As far as job creation goes, we actually do hire full-time fleet managers that would be local to the Altoona area. Couple of great benefits in that is that they are, they will be local, so they know the area very well. They know where the area is to play scooters and not to play scooters, where they're going to be popular, where they're not going to be popular. One of the big benefits of that is they get a ride, a percentage of the ride revenue off of every ride. So the more rides they take, the more money they make. So it incentivizes them to really put scooters in places where they're going to be ridden, and keep them riding, and not let them sit for very long, being unwritten. So it's one of those things that motivates our fleet managers to do quite well in this business. Expanding job access, again, putting these scooters at a near-transit locations, or allow them accessibility in areas, in particular equity areas, where they may not have access to bus transit, things of that nature, where they're able to get to a job, being able to play scooters in some of those areas, to allow them transport to their job, or to like, public transit is something that we found to be very helpful in those communities as well. And this is part of that equity option. So there's a text to unlock, so if someone who doesn't have a smartphone, they're still able to ride the scooters. We do have alternative payment options in case someone is unbanked. They do have the ability to use a prepaid debit card or cash to load payments. We do have equity zone pricing, so someone that is on public assistance, when they apply to Bird for membership, if they can prove that to us, then they get 50% off their rides. So, and those folks that are hardest-to-take, it does give them the ability to use the service and only pay half of what the others may. And again, that also applies to veterans, senior citizens as well, that 50%. And that equity zone is, can be that area identified by the city itself that you'd want particular pricing to be in. So we do have, it is an 18-plus program, so when the member does join, they do have to sign the member agreement, which they have, they're affirming that there are 18 years of age or older. And we do have an ID verification that has allowed us to do this within a few seconds, as opposed to taking a few minutes as it was a few years ago. It's very quick, it's very easy, and it allows us to make sure that the person who is applying for membership is the person on the ID. And it's been a very good system for us over the past year. So this is what I was talking about, the operating zone. The colors are a little harder to see, but this is Avon Park in Florida on your right. And basically, you can create, we would create with the city, a particular tailored zone where the scooters will be operational, where they wouldn't be. And this is as it would appear on the map for a rider. So when you do open up the app, you would see the icons and where you're able to ride a scooter. You simply press on the icon, it gives you directions, walking distance on how to get to it, how far it would take to walk to it, and also the charge on the scooter itself, so you know exactly which scooter you want to pick, that's closest to, that has enough charge to get to your next destination. Plus, it gives you an idea of that operating zone and where they are in and are not operable. This is the, one of the other product features, that GeoZone technology. Again, I talked about that slow zone, so you can create a specific area for that slow zone. One of the other great things is you can also create a no-ride zone. We found this particularly popular in seasonal events. So we do it for a lot of football games. So if Penn State, or I know we do it, Ohio State, we create an operating zone around the stadium for a certain period of time, in the morning on Saturdays till, you know, four o'clock in the afternoon, where no scooters can ride into it. It rides into it, it comes to a stop. And so we actually work with that, the campus or the community, so that we're avoiding any clutter issues. And that could be for a parade, it could be for a car show, imagine what it could be, all those things. We can create those temporarily, to go up and down, depending upon the event itself. One of the other good things, we work with a lot of, the markets that we work in, the DPW folks, is that if there is a water main break, if there's some kind of issue where the street is torn up for a particular length of time, two weeks or so, we can create that no-ride zone in that area, leave it up until we're notified by the city to take it down. And once we do, take it down, and then scooters can ride back through there again. That's kind of why we look for partnerships when we go into communities, so this kind of back-and-forth makes the scooters more seamless in the community, and so that they're able to work with, with the community as it adapts to different events that are going on, and different things on their day-to-day that necessarily don't come up, that we can adapt and are agile to make the scooters more popular in the community. So the fleet manager model, yeah, this is what I was talking about. So we hire someone locally, they basically are in charge of the day-to-day. So when we hire this person, basically, we look for someone who currently already has a business. It would be best if they did, they obviously, that's how they move the scooters around. They pick them up and move them around during the day in their vehicle. They love to have, we'd love to have them have a garage or an extra parking bay, that's where they store the vehicles. So when they're taken back to be charged, they're taken back to that fleet manager's office, parking bay, whatever it may be, that's where they charge the vehicles. Then the very next day, they take them back out again, and place them in areas where they know they're going to be ridden in the morning. And then their, one of their jobs is one of the KPIs they have to follow for us, because they do have someone at Bird that monitors their day-to-day activities, is they have to move the scooters in any given day many times. So there may be a popular area in the morning that where they're going to put them, maybe near their Amtrak, or areas where people come to the transit stops. In the middle of the day, they may not be as popular. So what they want to do is find locations where they will be popular, hospital, the campus, other areas where people are coming out of the building wanting to go to lunch. So in an effort, they're looking to get more rides, so they want to find those places that they're going to elicit more rides. So they're moving those scooters around to get them. It's not a, you know, set it and forget it, just leave them out all day. They're actively moving them, so the scooters are in places where they're going to get rides. And that actually benefits them, plus it benefits the community, because there's, we avoid a lot of clutter issues. There's zero debt, we provide the vehicles free of charge to the fleet managers. So they're given to them, we teach them how to manage the program, how to charge them, how to repair them, so they're basically our eyes and ears on the ground. And again, there is someone who oversees their day-to-day activities. And, you know, it's, for us, this is a model we switched to in beginning of 2021, and it's been a game-changer for us. We've launched 170 cities last year alone with this model, and all with a scooter population of anywhere between 50 and 75 scooters. So markets who've seen, if you travel to Nashville, or Tampa, or Miami, or places like that, and you see, you know, well into four figures of scooters, that's not what we'd be talking about here. We're talking a far smaller number, and a number, but starting between 50 and 75. And then, if the program grows, it grows. Some of the programs from last year did, and they reached over 100, but those were only typical areas, and they, you know, they would come down in the cooler seasons. And that's kind of what we'd be envisioning here for Altoona. So this gives you an idea how it works. There is no upfront investment from the city itself. And I could just touch on this, and I talked to the mayor about this before, insurance and indemnification, those are things that we take care of, that are part of any kind of MOU or operating agreement we have with any market. So there is, there are protections for the city. And again, naming the city as additional insured on our COI as well. The local impact, so on a lot of these, a lot of the fleet managers, again, some of the, we, average weekly payouts can be up to $1,500 a week gross for the fleet managers. The programs that have 75 to 100 scooters, they do quite well. And what happens is when those scooters start to become more popular, and it becomes less of a single-person job, they hire other people to do that. And so I could see them hiring at least two or three other folks to work within their, within this, to, you know, moving scooters around, and just expanding the opportunities for those in the area. One of the great things, and one of the last things I'll talk about, is the data. So the city would have access to our data dashboard. So you would see all the data that we get to see regarding the heat maps of where the scooters are being picked up and dropped off, the number of rides, length of rides. And what, what this really helps, not only it helps you to identify how popular the program is in the areas where it's popular, but it allows the fleet manager to identify the areas that are where riders are initiating, where those rides are ending. So that's where they know by data alone, where to put the scooters and clearly where not to. Because they don't see any rides ending or beginning in the area, there's no sense putting one there. So they kind of use this to help them identify the popular areas, so they're really only putting the scooters out in places where they're going to be ridden. Okay? As quick as I could. Any questions?
What, you know, obviously, a lot of the municipalities you've touched on, and I've, I don't know if it's Bird or whomever, but I, believe it or not, I've actually used this in Baltimore. But small markets, are you in many small markets?
We are.
Okay.
Yeah. I would say the 170 I talked about last year, the biggest one was probably Newport News, at 100-plus. The smallest one was Hartsville, South Carolina, I think, 6,500. I have three or four accounts in Alabama that are in that below 8,000 range.
Okay.
You know, and when I say 50, when I say 50 scooters every day, our fleet managers basically put out about two-thirds of that. So they would, you know, that, at the top end, it'd be about 30 every day. And they keep some in, you know, fully charged, so they can rotate scooters as they go back and forth, so they don't want them all out. And so that's kind of what that looks like. And it, you know, they start small, because they have to figure out how the business works. And then, as it gets popular, more and more scooters come out, and if, you know, the city agrees, you put more and more out. And then, there's a happy medium, where you're probably hitting it here in the summer. And then as it starts to cool off, and, you know, you start to hit the fall months, ridership will go down, and then you'll see less out. And that's kind of how that works, is fleet managers are only going to want to put out enough scooters where they're going to be ridden.
Yeah, I think, given the ice storm we had last Friday, you wouldn't have many out.
Purely, purely seasonal here, yes. I grew up in Latrobe, yeah, very familiar with the weather.
Okay. So does fleet manager, like, do they bring, collect them all up at night so they can recharge them? Or, I mean, it's just idle curiosity on my part.
Yeah, it depends on the charge, how much charge is left in the scooter itself. So if there is a, you know, a mixed-use development, and there's a, you know, they know, and above it, there are X many residents, if they have four scooters in that area that are 90-plus charge, what happens, they can just leave it out overnight, because with our operating hours, you can have the operating hours from, you know, midnight to 5:00 AM, the scooter is not operable. It sits, it can sit and not be ridden. So it disappears, that icon that you saw on that map, it disappears, so no one can ride it. You can walk up to it and try to scan into it, you can't. So it just, it sits like a 50-pound paperweight. And if somebody picks it up, the lights go off, the lights flash, it makes a loud noise. And as soon as that happens, the fleet manager gets an alert on their phone that someone moved a scooter. So they know immediately if someone touches it. It could be at 1:00 in the morning, they're going to get an alert that someone touched a scooter out of reservation. So in that instance, it's easier to leave it, and then at 5:00, it would turn back on, available for the next rider coming out of that building.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
It's interesting. I mean, it really is. And it's, people use them.
They do.
Yeah.
Do you have, do you have any incentives to, for people to put the scooters back in a place where it's not going to be, you know, crowding the front of a business, or right in the middle of a sidewalk? Like, do you have any incentives to promote?
Yeah, so we can create-
Good ridership or whatever?
Yes, we can create virtual parking spots. So you can, it'll be in the app itself, so you could create, so popular destinations, you want to find an area that would be easier for that person to park, whether it's behind the building, where their normal parking, like, I didn't know there was actually parking behind here, but you would put it back there and make the virtual parking spot back there.
Okay.
And incentivize the people to park back there, and let them know that's where that parking spot is. And again, once it becomes a little more mature in the market, businesses will come to us, or come to the fleet manager and say, hey, could you create a parking area back here, because people bring this here all the time, could we, you know, create, so they're parking in a particular location that is not in a, in a public spot, and is out of the right of way.
I like the idea, though, about having to upload a picture when you end the ride of where you parked the scooter, because, you know, a lot of, a couple of years ago, when scooters were coming out in cities, you know, there was a lot of complaints about people throwing them up in trees, or, you know, just leaving them laying on the side of the sidewalk, you know, for people to trip over. So I think that's a really good step that you guys took to kind of curb that behavior.
If they used to weigh about 20 pounds, it was far easier to do that. You'd be hard-pressed to toss it up, hit, and hit the top of the ceiling, so nowadays. So, but, one of the great things about, not only the picture-taking, but we have community mode, which is in the app itself. So in the bottom-left-hand corner of the app, there is a triangle. And what that does is it allows members and non-members alike, law enforcement, DPW, whoever it may be, to actively just go into the webs, go into the site itself. And if a scooter is misparked or damaged, they simply can get onto community mode, scan the QR code, let us know what the problem is. And as soon as they submit it, which takes 10 to 15 seconds, the fleet manager gets an immediate notification on their phone that this scooter isn't parked improperly, maybe on private property, it's damaged. And then they are set, their clock starts to tick about when they need to go pick that up. So they're immediately notified that the scooter is, and that scooter is taken offline until they're moving, until they move it, or, you know, take care of the problem if it's damaged, or something like that. So it does give the community, whether you're a member or not, the ability to help police the program, if all you want to do is just report it. And that's what we'd prefer, is that kind of, that kind of oversight.
Anybody else have any questions? Tom, do you have any questions, as the city solicitor?
Yeah, it's interesting. I would like, I'm sure if time comes, see the MOU, and are obviously very interested in the identification portion that you referenced, so you kind of beat me for that question, but, I mean, I'd like to see the documents reutilized, that's all.
Okay.
Yeah, I think this is good forward-thinking, and as our business district expands, and as downtown keeps spreading out, I think this is, this is a really good opportunity for us, something, something nice to look into.
All right, well, thank you, Jeremy.
Great, thanks everybody very much for your time.
Yeah, thanks for all.
All right, we'll move on to letter B, zoning 1701 to 1723 North Fourth Avenue. Omar?
Yes, so the city received a request by Mr. Ed Cruz for a zoning change to his parcels, which are located at 1701 through 1723 North Fourth Avenue. The parcels are currently zoned as limited residential, and Mr. Cruz would like them to be rezoned to general industrial. I'm going to turn it over to Rebecca to give you a little more detail about the specific request.
So Mr. Cruz submitted the zoning change application for the parcels of land he purchased at 1701 to 23 North Fourth Avenue. 1701 to 07 is vacant land. 1709 houses a vacant structure with a detached garage. 1711 to 23 is also vacant land. There is one other structure on the block, and it is a former Tyler Hall, which is right now being renovated, and it's privately owned. Mr. Cruz wants to have this, these parcels rezoned for the purpose of hopefully constructing storage sheds on the property. If he would be unable to construct storage sheds, he would like to build some type of commercial garage, or some type of commercial building. He does own the, his business now is located across the street and down a block. It is located in a general industrial district. That's really all we have. That's what he, per the Pennsylvania Municipalities Planning Code, this is the first step in the process, to see if you'll entertain the zoning request change. And if you do, then the steps will follow from there.
Didn't we rezone right across North 17th Street there a few years ago?
Mr. Cruz did bring that up, actually. He said that the Smiths Welding, he thought that that was. And I'll be honest, I wasn't involved in that, so I don't know, you probably would know better.
Yeah, if I can recall, that worked out pretty well.
And it is, the parcel, it's actually 1631 North Fourth Avenue, that is zoned general industrial. So it, I mean, it probably, I'm thinking, if it follows along what the rest of the block was, it was zoned multiple household. No, I'm sorry, it was zoned neighborhood business. And that parcel that Smiths Welding is on now, it was rezoned, if it was, to general industrial. So that's what that is.
So what do you need from us tonight? Just direction if you want us moving forward with starting the process?
Correct. I think the city clerk, Linda, gave you a timeline. The first thing is to basically have a discussion to see if you'll move forward with the request. After that, our solicitor will amend or prepare an amended ordinance. It has to be advertised. We have to send it to the City Planning Commission. We'll obviously run it by, I believe, the zoning hearing board. Needs advertised. The property needs to be posted with a notice indicating that it's going to be changed. And also, the adjacent property owners must be notified. So it takes some time, it's not an overnight thing, but this is the first step.
Okay. Well, I'm good with moving forward on this, if everyone else is as well?
I have no objections.
Yeah, yeah, he does well. He does a good job diligently keeping up his properties. Yeah, this is a good opportunity.
Okay. Anything else on that one?
That's all we really needed from council at this time.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to City Altoona Business Revitalization Grant Program. Also, Omar?
Okay, so I had included with the agenda some general guidelines. What it doesn't say on the top of the heading is that they are draft guidelines, but we talked about on multiple occasions about a grant program for businesses, a grant program through ARPA dollars, for businesses to either start up, well, start up and/or gear up their business in the city. We designated the city as the, the entire city as the area in which, you know, this could happen. Really, what I'm looking for tonight is just some feedback on the two different types of grants that we have here. One is a startup capital and operating grant. The other one is for physical improvements and equipment. There's a couple of things here that are, I think we need to clarify. First of all, I plugged in an amount up to $75,000, which is probably too high. So we can talk about that. We can talk about whether or not this should be some sort of reimbursable grant. The problem with a reimbursable grant is that people have to actually expend the money prior to getting reimbursed, which for some people may be problematic. The problem with not being reimbursable is that you have people that may take the money and want to do things with it other than what we actually have within the program here. So that's certainly something to think about. I did meet with some folks from the Altoona Blair County Development Corporation this afternoon. They're going to give some, give me some further guidance on ways in which we might be able to thread the needle to actually not make it reimbursable, but actually be able to get people to, you know, have commitments for the money lined up, and not actually have expended. be able to get people to, you know, have commitments for the money lined up um and not not actually have expended the money. So I'll wait for some feedback on that. But this is really just the first step to try to to look at um putting in place guidelines for this grant program. I think it could be very, very beneficial to certain people. I think it could be very beneficial to the city. Um, but then I also think that it could be subject for some some significant abuse if, you know, people, people get a hold of it and can use use it in the wrong way or to uh not not follow through with what their intentions were, I should say. So I I just wanted to throw it open as from there as a general discussion as to what council might like in terms of this program.
I um, I agree with your assessment that seventy-five thousand is a little too high. I was thinking that probably somewhere between five and ten thousand. Um, that's similar to um, GADAC has the facade grants and they the mini grant program where they um, do grants of, I I believe, up to five thousand dollars is the max there for facade improvements. So, you know, if we could keep ours to something similar in that range and maybe, you know, make make it a facade improvement program, um, you know, that money could go a long way in helping somebody that, you know, needs needs uh some new windows on their business or fresh coat of paint or, you know, things like that, new lighting or signage out front.
I think you did a good job on this, Omar. And uh I like the fact that it's not not just a startup business, but existing businesses are also eligible because we have a lot of folks that have been working very hard and faithfully uh running small businesses and so they would be eligible for this also. Yeah, I like this.
I think it's a great idea. I think it's an excellent use of this this ARP money. I I think, uh, Mayor, you might be a little low on the expenses, though. Uh, I was at Lowe's yesterday looking at some building materials and they're extremely out of control at this point, so just keeping in that, keeping in that alone, uh, the costs and the construction costs are a lot higher.
I get that, but you know, the the purpose of the the program is not to cover every cost, but to help offset some costs, you know, so.
I agree with you. The the money would go a lot further if we kept the but but you may have a project where someone wants, it's a good investment that maybe wants twenty or twenty-five thousand to get get it to cross the finish line, so.
That would be a good splitting the difference there.
Yeah, I I think probably we would need to be in that range fifteen, twenty, you know, ten, fifteen, twenty, to make a difference. If you're much lower than that with the cost of everything, I don't think it's gonna be real helpful.
So, Mr. Manager, with the kind of excluding the exact details of of the program, is this something that that the city would be looking to administer itself or are you considering?
Yeah, unfortunately, uh, the uh ABCD is not going to be able to administer this program, which is what I thought would happen initially. So this would be done internally with the, you know, city staff. Um, again, I I can get some guidance from ABCD, but, you know, we're gonna have to be dependent on city staff uh and some direction from our auditor, frankly, I think would be required um, to actually carry out and, you know, initiate, track, uh, audit these these grants to make sure they're not being used, uh, you know, as I threw out there in the way that they're not intended and that and and actually set up a program where, you know, we're doing what we can internally to track it and make sure that uh, we're meeting the end objective uh of the program, which is business development in the city.
I I think as positions are filled in our planning, that may be a good opportunity. This may be in their wheelhouse to play a big role in this also.
Yeah, I I um, I think you're absolutely right. That would be, they would certainly be involved in this. They would have to be, I would think.
Um, and I think from the initial conversation, when we had the conversation on the revolving loan fund, we had talked about that and then supplementing or doing in addition to a grant program that would not be subject to a repayment per- a repayment schedule essentially. So, um, I mean, I don't know what my peers on council feel about ma- maintaining that stance, uh, per se. Um, I think that there's definitely, you know, s- some real pluses from having a program like this. I just, I have, I have real concerns from the administrative aspect from our end because there's a lot of staff challenges that I think, I think we we struggle with, you know, trying trying to get everyone up to speed on this and making sure we're tracking and following up and and coordinating all that.
Yeah, well, staffing is definitely a challenge in many ways in the city. Um, but I, you know, I don't, I I don't, I don't foresee like people coming out of the woodwork for the money, you know, like hundreds of people.
You'd be surprised.
Yeah, that's true. Um, we probably have to have some sort of a screening mechanism, um,
I mean, you're offering.
Committee to to review.
Yeah, I mean, we're we're offering, what's the dollar amount we were considering for for this? Couple million? I mean, obviously, subject to a specified dollar amount, but I mean, I imagine that that would be enticing to some degree.
No, no doubt. I mean, there's, there's no doubt about that, but um, I think what I'm talking about, P R, you know, folks that are have the integrity to actually follow through with the program, not not people that are just uh you know, looking for a quick buck and looking to spend it foolishly. Um, and I don't want to harp on that, but I I do, as as I've put this forward, I I've become more aware that, you know, there's a lot of uh business activity in this, in the city and in the area that's not exactly, um, on the up and up, frankly.
If somebody is a a new business or or wanting to start a business, are we gonna require a business plan in order for them to apply to receive a grant?
Uh, well, at least within the, I mean, again, these are just generalized guidelines, but at least within the guidelines that we have here, you know, eligible costs. For example, under the startup capital and operating grants, you know, they can use, you know, thing, you can get, uh, you know, inventory purchases and marketing costs and product development costs. So that has to be part of a plan, yeah. I mean, I I would think so.
Any new business is gonna have a business plan that they've had to put together for a bank or some other financial institution. I imagine we would require one.
Right, but I meant, what if somebody comes to us who's not a business yet, wants to open a business, wants to apply for a grant? What do we make them show us in order to apply for a grant, you know? Other than, other than saying I have an idea for a business, that's what I was kind of driving at there.
Could St. Francis Small Business maybe help us out with that? Um, you know, being that they're gonna be located at the Curry Building, you know, could that be possible? That we could funnel them through the Small Business Administration?
I think that's possible. I guess like a national.
And there's another entity that's a part of them to score or something like that.
Yeah, score, that's.
I forget what it stands for, but it's like the. Exactly, that, so. Some of us are close to retirement.
Well, there's a number of ways we can go with this, uh, maybe sort of do it like a, not exactly like Goodman Trust, but in a similar fashion, depending on what kind, whether it was the score type of committee or or something along those lines.
So, um, I can go through some of the guidelines here if you if you want to take a few minutes to to go over that.
Have we had, I don't mean to interrupt. Have we had any preliminary, have you had any preliminary discussions with um our auditor?
No.
Okay.
I haven't, no. So, um, again, I I identified this would be eligible in anywhere in the city as the city would be considered the business district. Uh, eligible businesses would be fifty employees or less. Um, eligible costs for the startup capital operating grants would be, um, you know, business startup costs or what they call seed funding uh, to open new business operations in the city. Um, eligible costs would include working capital, operational support for existing businesses. Examples of eligible uses of funds include uh inventory purchases, marketing costs, product development costs, payroll support, business rent expenses, legal fees, utility costs and consulting costs. Again, we're talking about the amount. I think the amount, the more I think about it, the amount I have here, I think is patently ridiculous. Uh, just a little bit too high. Uh, there would not be a a match requirement. Um, costs could be documented through quotes, bids or other receipts supporting the requested amount uh and must be submitted with the application. Um, priority would be given to applicants who can evidence the following outcomes. Create a positive impact on real estate and wage tax base within the city of Altoona. Create a positive impact on employee payroll and wages. Uh, create a new, creates a new employment opportunities within the city. Um, and then grantees must provide documentation, all the expenditures from the grant funds uh and must be verified through an audit process. Looking at the second type of loan that we have here, or excuse me, grant we have here, um, would be would be grant for physical improvements or equipment purchases. Um, again, it would be any, any business that's fifty employees or less. Eligible costs would include renovations of existing buildings located in the city, purchase of land or real estate, and purchase of equipment. Um, again, there's no match required for this, at least as it stands now. Cost documentation, again, quotes, bids and other receipts supporting the requested amount. Um, and really, the the priorities are pretty much the same as what was listed in the in the prior uh, type of loan, except that it'd also be for, you know, rehab redevelopment and rehabilitation of existing properties uh with an emphasis on blight remediation. So I think that would be, you know, obviously very valuable to a you know, city that's always fighting, you know, fighting the the blight uh that it's dealing with, so. So anyhow, that's, those are the, those are the guideline highlights. I can certainly come back with something a little more specific for for folks uh at a future meeting.
So what's, refresh my memory, Omar, the total aggregate of money we would be talking about putting into this?
Um, that's really not been hammered out, but probably about a million dollars is what we were talking about.
And we're talking ten to twenty thousand dollars?
Yeah, so that's, that's why I was thinking bigger number.
Yeah, so I mean, well, my concern is the administration on that many, I mean, there's potential for a lot of, and if these are loans and being repaid, the ability to 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 manage all of these.
These are actually grants.
So they're grants, okay, so. But still, there's still gonna be some
Yeah.
Oversight on it.
Absolutely, and they would have to be tracked and, you know, you would have to match up receipts and and quotes and so forth. Yeah, that's uh, I mean, that's a consideration and it's a concern because as of, as of, you know, I, as I mentioned earlier here, I thought that uh ABCD would be doing the administration of it. They're not. They're they're providing some support. Uh, it would all have to be done in-house, so. Um, are we up to it? I I think we can be, I mean, you know.
And what would it take to be up for that?
Just to basically designate someone that's gonna be ultimately responsible for it and then then uh designate the staff that will support that function.
Omar, I have a suggestion. We have the Sheets Center downtown for the business students. Would it be worth looking to them to kind of review some of the the programs, um, you know, some of the grants? Yeah, they're they're business students and they're gonna be doing this in their career. Would that be a good use of Penn State? You'd possibly have them uh identify and, you know, look at them as funding and if they're just give recommendations based on um uses. You know, using Penn State and St. Francis for that, I think would be, it would give the kids a little bit of practical experience. And it would give the city a benefit.
I wouldn't rule it out, but then I I certainly wouldn't be entirely dependent on that as, you know, the function.
All I'm saying is to identify and make a recommendation, then we would act as probably the end, the end arbiter for that.
Yeah, and we could certainly check into that, whether that is really a potentiality with with someone on staff there that, you know, can speak more definitively about the, you know, the capabilities of folks in their program and the availability of time to do that, yes.
Would, would we set a a time limit per se on, you know, when, like if a, if a business applies, they have this this amount of time to to finish their project, to get us information, like how how would that look?
Well, it's all up, excuse me, all up in the air right now, but uh, uh, yeah, we certainly could restrict it. I I.
Because if we have four years to spend, to spend the money, right? Is that four years?
Three, no, less than three.
Three years to spend the money. I mean, you know, fifty businesses applying for twenty thousand dollars apiece would be, I think, a lot all at once, but it, you know, spread out over, you know, if the administration was spread out over the course of years, that would be, you know, certainly more manageable, I would think.
I, again, if we were, if we, if this was a loan and was repayments of it, that would be much more cumbersome and much more involved. This is just really approving the application and tracking the usage of the grant, so I don't.
Now, I agree with you. I mean, and I think generally, I I think that it's it's doable in-house, but I mean, if there are concerns, there's I think there are ways to make it more manageable if if members of council have those concerns that it.
Yeah, I'm I'm all all about looking for other resources to help, you know, help with staff staffing needs, but uh.
I'm trying to.
Omar, what if we reached out to um some of the local community banks to see if they would willing, be willing to offer us any support or help with a grant program?
Yeah, that is a good idea. Yeah. I don't see, I don't see how that could hurt, yeah.
Or even if several banks would like to maybe have somebody get involved and create like a little committee type of thing, sort of. I I'm sort of envisioning this along the lines of like our, one of our authority boards commissions type of things.
Kind of a grant review committee?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Made up of bankers.
Is there any administrative ability, like can you use some of the funds to administer the fund, the grants?
Yes.
I'm sure we could.
Yes.
So you might be able to find somebody part-time that was retired from banking, so you could maybe even tap to do something like that.
Create a new board or authority? Imagine we could do that.
Yeah, we can, we can create council, council committees and stuff.
Like, we wouldn't want to create an authority, but a board or or committee, something along those lines, that would give them the flexibility.
Couldn't this fall under the purview of the RA?
Yeah.
That's a great point. But they don't have any staff either, Bruce.
Well, but we're talking about that, and if he just said that some of the money could be used for staffing.
You could subsidize that, yeah.
Well, that's what I was asking.
Yeah, I mean, so, so, I mean, why reinvent the wheel here?
Yeah, I really feel like we're overthinking this a lot.
Yeah, because the RA, that would be right down the alley, basically, you know, what we're trying to do. And then there's other things we're doing with that also. So, yeah, that would actually probably be a good.
I mean, I think that's, that's the way to go. Rather than creating another group, and if GADAC can't can't handle this because of staffing, then then I think this falls with the RA. If we have the opportunity for some funding for um, management of this program. You know, and and I mean, if, um, and and why not?
You know, and, and, I mean, if, and, and why not, why not, I mean, would you see that as being a function of city staff assisting the R A, or the R A actually having, you know, somebody?
Well, as was mentioned, the, the, the R A has no staff, so it, it would be city staff. So, you know, that could be, you know, multi-purpose.
Can, can I make a recommendation here? We keep kicking this idea, this can down the road, but there is not enough staff in this city to deal with these things, all right? I'd, I'd make a motion tonight that I think this is an excellent program. I think this really addresses what, what the A R P was, monies were sent to the communities for. I believe that we should take money out of, out of this A R P money and put someone in the redevelopment authority, a staff member that has the capabilities to do this kind of thing.
Well, we can't take any action tonight because it's not a voting meeting, and it wasn't, wasn't on an agenda, but we could give direction to Omar to come back with a staffing recommendation. I mean, I think the sense is that we, you know, I'm, I'm getting the sense there's consensus here that the R A should handle this. We're talking about having somebody come onboard with the city to, to do economic development type of things. That could be the person assigned to the R A. I think, I think Omar, you know, maybe we want to task you with fleshing this out with a staffing plan and, and folding this into it. So we don't, what was it, kick the can down the road, is that, you know?
That's what I said, Bruce, but I think it's an excellent.
It's kicking a can down the road, Dave. I mean, we haven't had these problems before because we haven't had money before. I mean, and so it's just, it's, these are unique circumstances for us, and I just think if, you know, we allow Omar to come back with a, we've got two weeks to our, our next meeting, and, and, you know, put pen to paper and flesh out a plan on how we could staff this. Is that, is that reasonable, Omar?
Yeah, I mean, I, we can come up with a plan, that's for sure.
Okay. I, I think it's a great idea to put it under the R A. I think it's, that puts it in the hands of a, a committee that has vision for where we want to go. And the next thing we're gonna deal with is putting money there for another project, so I think it's a great idea to put a staff person there.
I have no, I have no problems with that. I think that's a solid idea, solid path going forward.
All right, anything else?
That's, that's enough.
Okay. We'll move on to the next item, the redevelopment authority agreement for eligible A R P uses.
Yeah, so this is not the finalized version. We thought maybe we would have one, but it's still under review by the redevelopment authority as solicitor. But it is most likely very close to what will be the final agreement, which is really just a, a subrecipient agreement between the city and the, and the redevelopment authority in relation to the, the money that, you know, the, the American Rescue Plan Act money that we intend to forward to the redevelopment authority for their uses, including use as the land bank of, of the city, so. So there's really not anything extraordinary in here. Tom, you've crafted it.
Yeah, it was just basically to provide the general parameters of, okay, sorry. Provide the general parameters of, you know, what the funding was to be utilized for, because it's, you know, all these, all these funds are subject to auditing, and to ensure that we have utilized them in a manner consistent with the American Relief Act, or Rescue Plan Act, I should say. And that's, you know, in crafting it, it was a combination of land bank and then just general redevelopment authority projects as well. My understanding was that the consultant with the redevelopment authority didn't want it limited to just land bank use. That was like one of a variety of things. So I crafted it that way. I have sent it over to the solicitor for the redevelopment authority for her review. You know, just waiting for her comments back on that, so.
All right, thank you.
You know, similar note, we, I also crafted one with respect to the A B C D revolving loan program. And that basically incorporated the, the general parameters which you folks had approved at the last meeting. The draft of that agreement was likewise sent to their solicitor, and they will be reviewing it and getting back to us with any comments they have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else on, on that item?
Whenever it's finalized, we'll submit it to, to the council.
All right, thank you. Moving on to the last item, Stormwater Project Update. Nate?
Okay, so you guys asked us for a list of projects that we kind of had in the chamber to get out to bid, and then also ones that we were looking at, kind of, year twenty-three, going into twenty-three, going into twenty-four. So in front of you is a list of the projects, the current projects that we have, and, I mean, I can run through them if you want. You can look at them. And then we have some that we're looking at in the future, so however you guys want to do it. I think I can hit on a couple of highlight ones. Well, we'll just run through all of them very quickly. The Seventeenth Street slip lining pipes, we're about ninety-five percent done with that one right now. We had three runs that we uncovered that were steel, that were to be concrete in the field. So they ordered more material, so we probably are within a month of getting that project done. There's some work down by Keystone Radiator and off of Kettle Street. That one should be started very soon here. Whittier Avenue, that's about an eight inlet, five hundred lineal feet of pipe project. That one's actually out for advertisement right now, so that one will be a twenty-two project to be completed. Thirty-second Street, Walden Avenue, we have a, that's a project that's up on the hill. I call it Toy Town Heights. But that's when we have some gas line and water line relocations to do, which are currently underway. We're looking to advertise that probably in about a month. That project's about three hundred thousand. That should help out then, once we're done with that. We have a bunch of icing issues up there and water that comes off the hillside, so that's kind of an overdue project. Then we'll be able to pave that up there once we get all that drainage done. We just have a small storm inlet up here at Seventeenth Avenue, right off of Thirteenth Street. We're just gonna throw that in with the Whittier project, just to get a better price to do that.
Nate, is that the one that, where the little area in the bowl?
Yeah.
Before you get down the hill?
Yep. Um, so then we hit on some of the other ones. The Twenty-first Avenue to Twenty-third Avenue, Twenty-fourth, kind of up in the bowl behind Keith. We have the study portion of that done, and we have the survey portion in the field to be, they're actually just got done yesterday or the day before, so that one's in design. We should have that one bid this year, too. That's really just surface improvements, inlets and curbing up through there, and we may actually add Twenty-fourth Avenue and Twenty-fifth Avenue into that, or we may just wait and put another project out there. Allegheny Furnace Area, right now, we're just in the design phase. We kind of ratcheted that back. At one point, we were talking about getting started and bidding a piece of it this year, but when we started to look at it, I, I would feel a lot more comfortable getting a little bit further into the design before we put a project out there, just to make sure it all fits together. So that's what we're working on right now. So I think the design in that entire area should be done this year, that we could look at bidding some projects next year with a supplemental, the drainage portion of it coming out of the A R P A money. Pleasant Valley, we put letters out to, the survey and the modeling, as I mentioned in previous meetings, is done. With the new floodplain, we were able to send letters out to everybody in that floodplain, asking for information on past flooding, if they have proof of floods or damage pictures, et cetera, et cetera. We've had some responses thus far, and Eads has put some poster boards together, so we're looking at doing a public meeting probably within the next month or two. So we'll do that, and so that thing's right now kind of like a two-legged monster. We're gonna finish the modeling piece of it, but at the same time, we're also looking at some kind of offline projects for some of the concerns that we've had residents talk about, a pipe on this street, maybe an impoundment there. And then we'll just have to look at some of the permitting issues that come along with that and see where we're at, as far as what we can squeeze in to end of twenty-four with that. North Seventh Avenue, between North Tenth and North Twelfth Street, we have a section of roadway down there that's still, for all intents and purposes, gravel, so we are planning to tie onto our grant project that we had last year through the Conservation District, extend the piping up through there, and then pave that piece. So that's kind of the last piece of, like, dirt road in the city, gravel road in the city. So that's gonna come out with a capital paving. That should finish here, third quarter twenty-two. And Public Works, Stormwater Needs Assessment Project, as I mentioned, we're going to rent some equipment and break some of the crews down into smaller subcategory crews and go out and clean catalog and kind of prioritize some of our longer-term maintenance, new storm catch basins, pipes that need replaced or pipes that need slip lined. So we're hoping to have a real big year this year as far as that goes. So that would kind of dovetail into the winter of getting some bigger projects out next year. Not any, not any real showstoppers, just kind of replacing, you know, kind of looking at our existing infrastructure and fixing it up. So I, I don't have any idea where that's at, but the cost to, you know, rent the equipment is probably around two hundred thousand for the year for that. So we're, we're kind of getting ready to go into that about April first. Thirteenth Avenue from Twelfth to Thirteenth, that's up by the Cathedral, coming down Tom and Joe's Pass City Hall. We have a project there that we were able to dovetail some drainage into. We had a grant to do this traffic signal at the Cathedral Square, so that's underway, so we decided to go ahead and put some stormwater improvements in there. I know that Tom and Joe's has complained for a while about drainage coming down the side of the road, and there are no inlets in that stretch, so we're gonna add that. So that'll be coming up here to bid very shortly. Probably that won't get, just with the way materials are right now, the lead time, we will probably have the drainage portion and the foundations done on that project this year, but the new signals will probably not go in until next spring, but that's not A R P involved. So then, for the future, as of now, what we're looking at, over by St. Vincent de Paul, Union Avenue, so coming up underneath the underpass to the right by Slinger's Axstroming Business, and then up past St. Vincent de Paul, the whole way up to Broad Avenue. We're gonna add some drainage in there, because there is really none in there right now, and then along with that, we're gonna go the other way, and probably the whole way down to Thirty-first Street on Broad and Bill, and get that all cleaned up. So we're looking, I just threw a million bucks in there for right now, for that, but that's gonna be a fairly sizable project. That's an area that has really no inlet, underground drainage also. Pipe intakes, we were looking for a lot of the areas where piping, where streams come into the city, and we have a lot of intakes that are kind of not in the best shape, so we're gonna look at doing something there to make some self-cleaning, fix some headwalls up, just make sure that we're not having any overland flooding concerns there where things back up. So we're gonna start to look at that. And then down at Seventh Avenue, right by the Gas Company on First Street, Lloyd Street, we have a bottleneck in there, and we are looking to separate the storm and the sewer down there by the C S O to sort of help some of those backup issues that are coming up, past Salvation Army, Seventh Avenue, Second Street, Third Street, Fourth Street, Fifth Street, like, in that area. We've had a few concerns, I think, from a gentleman or two who came to a meeting, but according to Water Authority, they're, they, they feel that that's a fairly, a, a good step in trying to get that kind of taken care of down there. That's not the only issue, but that would help that out, so. As of now, that's where we're at. Have not yet looked to the next year or two, so we'll see what Pleasant Valley comes back, what projects we can do there, kind of maybe some costs, what we think that'll do in the grand scheme of things, and then maybe we can throw a couple of projects in there on top of that, so.
Thank you, Nate. That was a, that was a good update on.
Sorry, that was kind of a.
All the projects.
Baptism by fire hose, but.
They're the kind of questions we get asked often. Thank you.
Anybody have any questions or comments for Nate? Thank you, Nate. We'll move on to the city manager updates.
Just a few items to bring you up to speed on. First, I want everybody to know that we made an offer to a candidate for the Community Development Director position. That offer was formally accepted, and, you know, it's been, it's been long vacant, and we are, we'll be glad to have someone that I believe is competent in that position. They're set to start on March the fourteenth, two weeks from today. Another item that we have here that I wanted to bring to your attention is, I know we've been trying to finalize a Personnel Policies Manual for the city. It looks to me, I, I hate to say this, because I, I just have to make it happen here, but I would think within about two weeks, we're gonna have a finalized policy manual for perhaps even for a discussion at the council meeting.
Why do you hate to say that?
Well, I, I, because I, I got, it's not final. I don't have it in my hand, the final version, so. I'm, I'm kind of giving you the, 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 the notice that it's gonna happen. I just have to make it happen. And then, last but not least, tomorrow, the city's real estate tax bills go out, so you can look for them in your mail in the coming week.
We have that to look forward to.
The, the opposite of Christmas.
Always end on a high note, Omar. That's what we like about you.
Well, see, Councilman Kelly, the reason I say that is because that's our, our largest
I know.
Revenue source, so that's why I'm pointing that out.
Thank you, Omar. Any questions or comments for Omar?
Thank you, Omar.
All right, we'll move on to the council discussion items. Councilman Kelly?
Well, I think, you know, just looking at tonight with Nate's presentation and the things that Omar brought up, we've got a lot going on. And as was alluded to earlier, I mean, we're, we're thin in spots. We, we've lost a lot of places over the years with attrition, and we haven't filled them because of income constraints, and we're, we're asking an awful lot of our people, and we appreciate it. So, and getting the A R P money has been a blessing, but it's been a lot of work, and, and we certainly appreciate the extra time that, that has gone into putting this together, and not just from you two tonight, but everybody, and, and all their hard work, so. Really nothing else to offer, except those of us that were at the Rec Commission banquet Saturday evening, I thought that was one of their, their, their better events, and one of their better banquets, and I, I just had, it was, it was great. And if you weren't there, you missed it, and I'd encourage you to, to, anyone in the community, get out and support that. They do an awful lot of great things in our community, and recreation's important, and it's important that we support it. Mayor, that's all I have.
Thank you, Councilman Kelly. Councilman Harper?
Mayor, I just wanted to thank Nate, especially, this is a fantastic update, and thanks for everything that you've done so far, and thanks for all the work that you put into this and everything that's gonna happen going forward, because it, yeah, it looks like a, a lot, a lot over the next couple of years, so. You know, thanks for everything that you guys do. And then, of course, I'd be remiss if I didn't extend our, my prayers to the people of Ukraine right now. That's, that's all, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Butterball?
Good, Mayor.
Councilman Nickus?
Thank you, Mayor. I will echo Councilman Harper's comments. I think it's a good reminder of all the challenges that we face here at this moment, are really a first-world problem, and there are many people across the pond, so to speak, that problem. And there are many people across the pond, so to speak, that, uh, are cold and going through a lot right now and their future's uncertain. So, uh, our, our prayers are definitely with the folks in Ukraine. I will echo Councilman Kelly's comments as well on the Blair Rec Dinner. It was excellent. Craig Woolley was an excellent speaker to have, uh, this past year. Um, obviously, I guess being on the radio really knows how to draw a crowd and he did an excellent job. And I am going to take this moment here for a personal moment here to wish my mother a happy fifty-fifth birthday tonight. I know she's watching at home.
She's going to love that you said that. That's, you couldn't just leave it at happy birthday, right?
And I know, and she retires on Friday, which is even more special. So, love you, Mom.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Ellis?
Uh, yes, just one thing, Mayor. I just want to wish our thoughts and prayers to, uh, members of the Police Department. They lost a veteran member, uh, last week.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Bailey?
Um, I think the one thing that I think we need to look at is using the community to help with some of these decisions that we have going forward. Uh, we have a lot of people in the city that have years of experience and, um, I think bringing people in that could help us make some of these decisions outside of staff. You know, the staff has really been phenomenal in negotiating contracts this year and doing the stormwater work and, um, just the day-to-day, the fire and the police and Rebecca doing the zoning work. Um, I think they've all run a little thin and, um, I think getting some staff with the availability of the funds would probably be a big help to the city.
Thank you. Um, I just had, um, one, I guess, one more piece of business. Um, um, as you guys are probably all aware, the, the city's enterprise zone expires, uh, J- July first of, of this coming year after our two-year extension that DCD granted us, uh, two years ago. Um, and so in order to keep that, uh, enterprise zone going, ABCD has been working with, um, DCD to allow, allow the county to create a countywide enterprise zone. Um, so they're asking for the municipalities that have zoning to, um, pass, um, ordinances prior to the end of next month so that they could submit an application to DCD creating that enterprise zone within the county. So, um, I just wanted to give everybody a heads up that that will probably be on the, um, March fourteenth meeting agenda. If everybody is okay with that moving forward. Okay, that was all I had. Um, we'll take media questions now. Bill?
Thank you. Um, regarding what you just said, would that enterprise zone be, would the entire county be in the enterprise zone?
No, no, the, the county would act as the contiguous area that is required for the enterprise zone. Um, but the zone itself would be only comprised of five or six municipalities, I believe.
You mean like parts of five or six municipalities?
No, the entirety of five or six municipalities that have zoning. Zoning is a requirement to, to have an enterprise zone. So there's only, um, Altoona, Logan, Tyrone, Williamsburg, Roaring Spring, Holidaysburg. I believe those are the only ones.
Okay. Um, Omar, can you say who the new Community Development Director is, is, is going to be?
Yeah, her name's Diana White.
Spelled like you would think?
Yes.
Just a noise, well, okay.
Silent.
Make sure it's spelled how Bill would think.
Um, regarding the, the potential hiring of somebody for the RA, could, could somebody, would that be like a full-time person who would be, like in, in the planning department? Who would be the staff of the RA? Or like, how, who would that be? Or what kind of a person would that be, I guess?
Well, I was tasked with, uh, coming up with a staffing plan. I don't have that plan finalized yet, Bill. So it's a potential, yeah, it's, it's going to be someone in the Community Development Department. Um, but I don't know the fi- you know, I don't have the final plan together.
And would, would the duties of that person likely be only partly occupied by the RA activities, I guess?
Yes.
Okay. Would it be, would you envision that being a permanent position or just until the ARPA money runs out?
Again, I haven't thought, thought it through that, that far ahead.
Yeah, Bill, I think, I think that's premature until Omar has a chance to sit down and think about this. Plus he just hired somebody new and he probably wants to get their input. And, uh, I mean, this could be something that could be handled among existing staff. We don't know. You're, you're asking questions like it could be a new position. We're not necessarily saying that.
Okay, because I thought that's-
Yeah, yeah. But, but clearly your line of questioning is you're, you're wondering if this is a new position. We don't even know that that's the case. So.
But, but the, the, the loan program, I'm blanking out. That, that was in the, the discussion of that was in the context of that new loan program, right? And administering it. Um, and that, or the new grant program, I mean. And that would be under the oversight of the RA at this point? That's, that's what, kind of the way you're looking at it?
It sounds like that's the way it's going. So yeah, whoever's going to be staff, uh, for the RA is going to be involved in that activity for sure.
Okay. Um, regarding the scooter program, does, that does Bird, that company, does that company require the city's permission to operate here or is that?
Yeah, Bill, the legislation that's being, um, proposed in Harrisburg, one of the requirements is, is the, the municipality has to opt into wanting scooters, um, in their city. So, yeah.
And are, are scooters now prohibited in the city? Like any-
Scooters are prohibited in the entire state on, on roadways. They're not, they're not, um, they're not able to be used, um, on, on the public right-of-way, I guess, um, outside of Pittsburgh. So last year in the, the fiscal code, there was a pilot program that created a scooter program in the city of Pittsburgh. Um, but that was only limited to second-class cities. So, you know, there's new legislation now that would open it up to third-class cities and second-class A, which would be Scranton. Philadelphia is not included in, in this legislation.
And would these basically be, be under the rules that apply to bicycles now?
Correct.
Okay. Well, so, so this is all contingent on this legislation being passed, right?
Yeah, yeah. Yeah. Now, it did, it passed the Senate Transportation Committee two weeks ago, um, with a vote of like, I think it was fourteen to one. So there's a full Senate vote scheduled for it on the middle of March, I believe. So then after that, it will go to the House and then they'll have to go through the same process over there.
Do you know, is, is it predicted to, to pass altogether? Would it be approved?
Um, I think in last session, there was some, a lot of questions surrounding the insurance liability with it. Um, you know, that was kind of a gray area that, that, um, some people on the House Transportation Committee raised. Um, so that bill didn't go anywhere last session, but it looks like they have all of that stuff, um, ironed out and worked out this time around. So I think the chances of it passing both chambers look pretty promising this time around.
Did the governor-
But at Harrisburg though, so you never know what's going to happen.
Did the governor say anything about it?
He, I'm sure he would sign that bill. I don't know if he's indicated support or not for it.
Okay.
Can we express support through like PML?
Um, yeah, in fact, PML is supporting that, that bill as well. But I think if we wanted to send maybe, um, at our next meeting even, do a resolution to send to the House and Senate leadership showing our support for scooters as a city, I think that would be a, a good step, um-
I think that's a great idea. I, I would be in favor of that. Very good.
I don't know. I mean, why, why waste any time? I think you've got consensus support from, from council on this. Why not just act and send a letter on your, from, over your signature-
Yeah, okay.
-supporting it and saying that council supports this initiative.
Okay.
And we don't have to wait.
All right.
We don't want to kick the can down the road.
Okay.
We're going to get T-shirts made up that say that, Bill Ellis.
And you can reference tomorrow's article in the Mirror about the council consensus in that letter.
Yeah. As long as the reporter writes that there was council consensus.
Bill got homework.
That's right. Um, and then one other thing, the, the, um, grant program that we talked about, that you guys talked about tonight, is, is that sort of like complimentary to the loan program for the larger amounts that ABCD Corp. will, um, be administering?
Uh, yeah, you could look at it as, as a complimentary program. Um, again, it's a lot, it's a grant, not a loan. Um, it's in much smaller increments, which we haven't quite finalized that, what that amount would be, what the maximum amount would be. But yeah, I mean, it's, it's complimentary in the sense that it's also designed to spur economic growth in the city and redev- and redevelopment.
Mm-hmm. To spur like the creation of new businesses as well as like-
Yeah, creation of businesses as well as, uh, you know, helping those that are currently in business and in need.
Okay, thanks. That's all I have.
Thank you, Bill. Meeting is adjourned.